Okay, at this time, we will call the March thirteenth, twenty twenty-three Board of Supervisors meeting to order. Supervisor Lewis.
Present.
Supervisor Day.
Here.
Supervisor Ayers.
Here.
Supervisor Lyons.
Here.
And Supervisor McDaniel's present as well. At this time, we will hold a prayer for the board by the by the pledge of allegiance. Those attending are not required to participate, but if you'd like to join us, please stand.
Let us pray for wisdom and understanding to best serve our constituents tonight as we consider the issues before us. Give us strength to do what is right, honest, and best for Rockbridge County. Let us pray for comfort for all those suffering from illness or the loss of a loved one. Let each be supported.
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, and infinite.
We will hold citizen comments near the beginning of the meeting, and we will do our best to take citizen comments remotely. There are two options for citizens to offer comment. If joined by telephone, you may dial into one. The numbers listed on the county website, the webinar ID and password are there for your convenience. Citizens wishing to simply view the meeting live or after the fact can do so on Rockbridge County Board of Supervisors YouTube channel, also available on the county website. If you wish to make a citizen comment as a Zoom meeting participant, you will use the raise your hand feature. You can press the raise hand button at the bottom of your Zoom window or press star nine if calling in by telephone. Are there any changes to the agenda for tonight?
Yes, sir.
Uh, any recognitions or presentations?
Yes, sir.
All right, next up, we have citizen comments. Anyone signed up wishing to address the board? Is there anyone present didn't have the opportunity to sign up wishing to address the board? Anyone online wishing to address the board?
No one with a hand raised.
All right, at this time, we'll move on to the February twenty-seventh minutes. Has everyone had the opportunity to review those? Any questions, concerns, comments? If we approve in a second.
Second.
All right. Mr. Lewis.
Hi.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Ms. Ayers.
Yes.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
And Jared Rogers as well. Uh, next up, we have the, uh, County Financial Package, Mr. Harrison.
Um, yes, um, as of two twenty-eight, two thousand twenty-three, general fund revenues are at thirty-six million, nine hundred eight, two thousand six hundred forty-three dollars. General fund expenses are at thirty-five million, seven hundred ninety-eight thousand, eight hundred ninety-seven dollars. Um, sixty-seven percent of the year has passed as of February twenty-eighth, and our sales taxes coming in at seventy-five percent. Um, so eight percent above. Uh, our lodging taxes up at at seventy percent, meals taxes at seventy-three percent, the cigarette taxes at sixty-nine percent, and our emissions taxes at fifty-seven percent. Uh, before you, we have a request for resolution for additional appropriations in the amount of seven thousand four hundred sixty-three dollars. And our total bills for February twenty-two, twenty-three is one million, two hundred fifteen thousand, three hundred seventy-three dollars and seventy-nine cents. That's all I have.
Okay, is there any questions or comments from Mr. Harrison? If not, is there a motion to prove as presented?
So move.
In a second.
I'll second.
All right, Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
Ms. Ayers.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Hi.
And Jared Rogers as well. Next up, we have, uh, consideration of surplus property.
Yes, sir. Uh, we have, uh, three vehicles, uh, that police services, um, believes that, or that's said at the end of their life. One is a two thousand eight Ford Explorer with a hundred and sixty-one thousand, one hundred and six miles. Uh, a two thousand eleven Ford Crown Victoria with hundred forty-three thousand, nine hundred eighty-six thousand miles. And a two thousand one Chevy Impala with a hundred and thirty thousand plus unknown because the odometer has or the odometer has been broke for, uh, some time. Um, we're requesting, uh, discuss as necessary, and if you're in agreement, uh, adopt the resolution, authorize us to, um, advertise those for, uh, gov deals.
Any questions, comments from this here? Or motion to proceed with that?
Somebody.
In a second.
Thanks.
All right, Mr. Day.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Hi.
Ms. Ayers.
Yes.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
And Jared Rogers as well. Uh, next up, we have consideration to issue a municipal software RFP. This, Mr. Suter.
Yeah, this process has been a long time in the making. The board, uh, for his, has for years discussed the potential to look at various options for municipal software. And as you might recall, in the work session last July, the board heard the findings of, uh, Virtual IT Incorporated's assessment of Rockbridge County's financial management software. During the initial assessment on, when our current status is determined that we would need to expand that look, uh, beyond the scope of the financial management software itself to include additional department software solutions that are integral to county operations. Um, those include building permitting and community developments, which currently lack, lack the software solution for their business functions and processes, and also communicating with the, uh, uh, the financial software. Uh, in the early stages of discovery process, it was recognized that the current systems used for these critical functions are lacking modern features to maximize efficiency of operations and to ensure that the county acquires software solutions that can integrate and work together with one another. So, uh, with the input of stakeholders, uh, the final draft, the RFP is ready for your consideration. It's attached in the document or in your package. Uh, Virtual IT's chief technologist, Randy Grub, is with us tonight. Discuss any concerns or answer any questions from the board. Uh, staff, including IT managers, uh, Stefan Yenik, who incidentally drafted this report, and I forgot to put his name at the top, so I want to recognize him for that. Um, uh, and Treasurer Betty Travato is with us this evening. Commissioner of Revenue David White soul. And, um, uh, Brooke is with us as well this evening, Tomlin. Um, they're here to try to answer any questions that you might have. So with that, I would, uh, turn it over to, um, uh, Stefan, if you have any comments or, uh, Randy, uh, he's with us online. If you had any, any comments you wish to add to that.
I don't have any comments, but I'm happy to entertain any questions.
Any questions, comments from board? Terms.
So again, the, the request is, um, um, to authorize us to, um, uh, put this RFP on the street. And I would ask if they.
Uh, Treasurer, Commissioner, any questions, feedback, comments you have for us?
So the response to that was not at this time, uh, the questions that, um, they might have would need to wait till after the RFP comes back, just for the record. The proposals, or proposals, sorry.
So maybe there'll be some sort of committee to review those proposals.
Yes, sir.
Consisting of IT Director or Commissioner.
Yep, yes.
Right. It'll be the same, uh, okay, yeah, just thinking, yeah, unless you had something specifically different.
We have nine.
Uh, is, uh, there's no questions. Is there a motion to, uh, approve the RFP for being sent out?
So move.
In a second.
Second.
All right. Uh, Mr. Lewis.
Hi.
Ms. Ayers.
Yes.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
And Jared Rogers as well. Uh, next up, we have the consideration of contract for benefit plan advisor.
Yes, sir. I'm covering this for Heidi. Um, the county's contract for health benefits consulting expired, uh, at the end of the calendar year. And, um, in a request for proposals was issued, the scope of work required, uh, remain unchanged and included the full benefit, benefit plan consulting, uh, with a concentration on health benefit, uh, health insurance benefits. Three proposals were received, which were ranked by staff team and presented to the personnel committee. The committee authorized the team to enter into negotiations with One Digital and Benefits Incorporated, the top-ranked proposer. Uh, we've subsequently negotiated a contract that's within our current budget and allows us maximum flexibility in service options moving ahead. And the proposed contract is attached for your review. And, uh, an appropriate or not appropriation approval resolution is required or is provided for you to adopt should you agree with the recommendation.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Suter? Personnel committee, anything you'd like to say or anything?
I would just like to say that I think One Digital, uh, has, has done us a, a good job and something that they contribute, which I think we're getting the benefit of is considerable help in, um, taking time to talk to employees and answer questions and thus educate, you know, on, on what, uh, being over insured is and how they can get the maximum out of their premium, value. So I appreciate that.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'm in.
In a second.
Second.
All right, Mr. Lewis.
Hi.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Ms. Ayers.
Yes.
Mr. Day. And Chair of our ships. All right, next up, we have the FY, uh, twenty-four budget discussion.
Yes, sir. Um, let's see, I'll start with general front summary that's on your screen. Uh, this is the board's second look at the overall budget for FY twenty twenty-four. As noted on March sixth, we have a large gap between anticipated revenues and requested expenditures. As shown, revenues are up, uh, one point six million or three point one percent over last year. However, the breakdown's a little more complicated than that. Um, we have areas of significant decline in local revenues and areas of significant increase. The main areas of decrease include real estate tax. So to explain that, when the rates equalize from seventy-four to sixty-one cents, we still have to account for the ninety-six percent collection rate. So there's about a three hundred and twenty-six thousand dollar decline in expected real estate there, but, uh, you have to do that in order to equalize. Um, vehicle personal property tax with falling valuations, uh, as reported by, uh, Mr. White soul. Uh, at the reduced rate of three eighty, three dollars and eighty cents, we anticipate a seven hundred and thirty-two thousand dollar decline or approximately ten percent. Um, uh, vehicle tags is none of them were in the second year of the transition to permanent decals. And a reduction from last year is a hundred and forty-one thousand as all the permits are now, uh, or most of the permits have now been purchased. Uh, public service corporation taxes is down two hundred and five thousand or approximately ten percent. And with these, uh, the total from these four declines alone is right at one point four million. The main areas of increase includes, uh, sales tax of five hundred and twenty-eight thousand, meals tax of nearly three hundred and fifty thousand. Lodging tax up seven hundred and four thousand, though, though more than, uh, three hundred and fifty thousand of that increase is also tracked on the expenditure side as those funds support the Virginia Horse Center and opposite tourism legislatively and by formula agreement respectively. Legislatively by, uh, for the Virginia Horse Center and, um, uh, by formula agreement with tourism. Fines and forfeitures are up, uh, nearly a hundred and seventy-five thousand by gradual in, uh, increase in speed, speed control efforts, uh, which were generally suppressed during COVID. Um, interest on investments is projected to be up five hundred and fourteen thousand based on, uh, increased interest earnings, and we're currently tracking that as the, as the Fed keeps moving the rate. Um, and it keeps going up, so we're tracking that as well to see if, uh, we can, uh, uh, make any adjustments to that number. Uh, transportation, transportation chargeouts are up a hundred and fifty-three thousand, but again, most of these come as an increase on the local expenditure side as well, uh, with the exception of what we contract out and take care of for state, uh, agencies. Uh, again, those are just the highlights on the revenue side. Um, um, some of the other revenues are up or down by smaller figures. I didn't cover all of those. Uh, so the overall impact on revenues again is, uh, one million, six hundred forty-nine thousand, three hundred and fourteen dollars. With regard to state and federal revenue, uh, federal revenues are actually tracking down by about two thousand dollars. State revenue is up a little over six hundred thousand, mainly attributed to a seven percent compensation board salary increase. And we're still not clear if that will hold on the adopted state budget. We've learned in the past couple of days that the state may, uh, eliminate the additional two percent and keep it, uh, at five percent. Uh, we've heard that from, uh, Commissioner White, so we got a, um, a, uh, email today and, uh, late Friday, we got, uh, something from the jail as well, so it might be at five percent. Uh, and generally, a significant increase in revenue is good news. Uh, however, proposed expenditures are up by, uh, are up by much, much more, um, requested expenditures. So going through the, I'll just highlight the, the main expenditure lines. You go at this point, uh, you all have seen the, the budget and, uh, um, and I'll note that all county budgets, uh, for county positions, uh, representing com, uh, constitutional officers represent an increase in health insurance of twelve and a half percent and an increase in the salary line of five percent as you see it. Um, constitutional offices, uh, again, uh, show an increase in seven percent. And again, that's what we know from state budget discussions, but more is trickling out now. Um, that draft also includes the same seven percent raise for any locally supported constitutional positions as shown. Um, so going down through the main, uh, items here, you'll, you'll see general administration and, and financial category. The budget increase sits at about ninety-four thousand or three point one percent. Uh, that includes departments such as, as you, uh, as you can see, the board supervisors, my office, finance, IT, treasurer, commissioner. Um, main drivers of this increase, uh, are again the five percent increase in wages and seven percent for constitutionals. And additionally, there is a, uh, new position in the IT department, which would bring staffing levels to a total of two. Uh, the next category is registrar. It's up, uh, thirty-nine thousand at thirteen, uh, thirteen point three eight percent. Main drivers here are an increase in the, uh, rental and polling places and also in, in salary and benefits, um, and also, uh, in, uh, an increase for poll workers. Uh, there was a request last year for an increase in the deputy registrar's base salary, and the board at that time agreed to a plan to gradually increase that salary over a period of years. The judicial category is up a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, just over eight percent. And again, main drivers here are court security upgrades and salaries. Um, public safety sees the, uh, the most significant jump at one point seven two eight or fourteen percent. And in addition to the raise, uh, raises I mentioned in health benefits, um, which is with larger staff of the, uh, Sheriff's Department, um, uh, and, and firing EMS, that increases the, the cost considerably. Uh, there were also three, uh, SRO positions added in the Sheriff's Department last year. And, uh, also the, the jail, uh, sees a significant increase with new programming in medical services contract and in, in food services. Jail commission meets, uh, tomorrow morning. And we are going to continue to go over that budget that, that's tomorrow's going to be the first reviewed by the full commission. And, um, we're going to, uh, hopefully be able to, to reach some agreement on that budget as well.
Uh, I'm sorry, isn't the SRO positions grant funded?
Yeah, they're, they're grant funded, but it's going to show, it still shows as a, as an increase in the expenditure side.
For year two, we, year two, FY twenty-four is year two, and we pick up, uh, forty-five percent of the, of those positions.
But I, I thought since some of them weren't filled last year that the, the state had a we were able to reapply and get full funding.
They did. We, we did for one, and we're applying that to the revenue side.
Okay. So even though the expenses of it should be a revenue.
Right, I probably should have mentioned that, yeah. Yeah, there's, there's some of these that, that are going to have a revenue associated with it. Um, and again, while we're on it, you know, again, there's a revenue associated with the, um, comp board positions, there's revenue coming in. Um, on, on fire and rescue is up nearly fourteen percent. Uh, much of this increase is due to, uh, the addition of twenty-four seven staffing approved, uh, this year with the new, uh, service scheduled to start this month or next month. And then additional fire instructor position, which is offset by revenues for year one, uh, but, but shows in, on the expense side. Um, public works is up, um, uh, four hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars or twelve point eight percent. Uh, most of that increases in the solid waste department with contracted cost increases and tipping fees, um, as well as in fleet services where the fuel line, uh, is really being right-sized, sized and, and parts are uh, increasing in cost. And again, same thing, for the most part, uh, there's a revenue associated with those increases. Though most of that revenue ultimately is built into the budget, whether it be for a charge out to the sheriff's office or, or a fire and rescue or schools, et cetera. Uh, public health and welfare is, uh, thirty-one thousand, one point six percent. Most of the costs associated with that are, um, uh, or the fact that localities are paying an increased share of the Virginia Department of Health. Um, and, uh, the local shares being shifted more, started last year and it's shifting more, uh, to local cost. And also the funnier fo- formula-based increase in CSB costs, community services for uh, under education, which that it's, it's not the, obviously, uh, uh, K twelve, but, um, that is up slightly for Mountain Gateway Community College. Uh, Parks and Rec is up at three percent at forty-seven thousand. Um, and, uh, you know, most of that's attributed to, you know, those two factors, salaries and, and, uh, uh, health insurance. Um, cost in community development are up eight percent at two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars with the majority of the increase attributed to the lodging tax pass-through. Uh, as noted before, to the Virginia Horse Center as a function of the three percent enabled by, uh, state and local code. Under non-departmental costs are up, uh, uh, seventeen percent, uh, with two hundred and seventeen thousand, uh, or two hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. And nearly all of that being the increase in annexation payments at Lexington as the result of increased revenues. Uh, under transfers, the majority of the, of the increase under transfers is in the school operational request, uh, which is currently at, uh, one point two, one, one million, two hundred fifty-three thousand, seven hundred eighty-four dollars. So that still leaves us with a one point nine million dollar gap, one million, nine hundred thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars. Um, the finance committee met, uh, last week and helped close that gap from the original, uh, two point three million. A few of the things that I'd like to note, um, are redu-, that are reduction to the previous, uh, to what you saw previously. Uh, nine-one-one center budget and also the jail, which again, the commission plans to review again tomorrow are, are down some now. The finance committee also, uh, incorporated the public safety committee's recommendation for funding increases in volunteer fire and, and fire and rescue. Um, currently, the, uh, and these, these are coming out of the finance committee is, is things to consider for the board. Uh, the rats, the rats and new vast requests for additional funding will remove pending additional discussion and clarification as to what other revenue sources are being sought. Uh, the finance committee recommends, uh, level funding the library and removing the additional position requested by the trophy. At this point, the decision, uh, needs to be made on, um, what combination of spending cuts and revenues the board is going to make. Uh, as mentioned in the, the last budget meeting, uh, transferred capitals or transfers to capital are not budgeted at this time. Budgeted capital, uh, is expected to come from capital reserve funds in our two capital accounts that are set aside for capital. Um, the finance committee also asked us to what, about what it would look like to, uh, equalize the veh-, the vehicle personal property tax rate. Um, and what, what, uh, Mr. Harrison found is that at a rate of about four thirty is projected to bring in the same amount of revenue as the three eighty did this year. Um, and that concludes what I have for an overview. We're prepared to review any parts of the budget and whatever detail you'd like. Um, and I'd also certainly defer to Supervisors Lewis and Lyons as members of the finance committee at this point as well.
Supervisor Lyons, Lewis, anything you'd like there?
Well, we still have a ways to go, but I, I think we can get there. Um, we'll receive the school budget this week. Uh, I think, uh, but the changes going on in the state, I think it's, would be a good base to start off, uh, with salary increases at five percent. Uh, rather than seven. I, I think, uh, Mr. Harris has found some, a, a better projection for revenues as far as, uh, interest, I think he sent a note out today. So, uh, and I think the equalization of personal property we need to look at. Be nice to, if we could get it a little lower than four thirty, but it'd be good to look at. Uh, so I think basically we're down to two, two ways to increase revenues, and I think the other things we'll have to look at expenditures. I think, uh, maybe not this budget, but in the future, we're going to have to really look at, um, county preschool. Uh, I just don't think, uh, uh, no fault to Mr. Suter, but I don't think he's should be running an education department with, with the preschool. I think, uh, there are probably other better qualified people in the county that can do it and get it out of our purview. So hopefully we'll be meeting again soon and, uh, but I, I'm feel confident that we should not have to raise real estate taxes. We ought to be able to do what the board of, uh, equalization, uh, set for us to equalize and, and we ought to be able to, uh, accommodate that.
I agree with most of what Dr. Lyons said. The last statement is, is, I, I, I really want to, I think, that's probably where we'll end up, but I, I just wanted to say, I think it's important to note the commitments that this board made to public safety, uh, in the past year, uh, in between budget cycles. And, you know, that's the, there's a lot of pressure on the budget from that, and, and we committed to that and we expect.
Ms. Ayers, you have any questions, comments?
Oh, I, I'm sorry, great.
No, no, Bob. Right ahead.
I think we all feel we were justified in, uh, changing of the public safety and adding the positions to the county to see that the calls were answered. It, it still bothers me that we've lost our revenue of five hundred thousand dollars from our annual county tag set. That's something that, uh, we're going to have to overcome somewhere.
Ms. Ayers, very much.
Well, I would just also say, uh, I am certainly committed to fire and rescue and feeling that we're, that our actions earlier were justified and feel that the citizens of Rockbridge County expect, um, expect someone to come. They do, and, and, and we are trying to solve those problems, and it's not a perfect kind of, you know, it's not perfect, but we, uh, work on that every month, every year, and the goal is to get better and better at that. But I think every year and the goal is to get better and better at that. But I think every community, every state is watching huge rises in fire and rescue. Especially as counties move from volunteer to a hybrid, which we have volunteer and and staff. So I'm really proud of where we are there and I think it's only gonna get better. So.
So I guess tonight we need to decide which schedule we're going, right?
Yes, sir. That would be much preferred. If there's no, if you if you don't wanna look at any change to the effective rate of real estate tax, you could keep the 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 original schedule and stay on schedule. Now, that's not to say that the state's not gonna adopt a budget late as they have in the past, but they've adopted what they're calling a skinny budget and I would hope that any changes they would make would not be tremendous impact to localities.
I mean, we're but we're not we're not looking to top the budget tonight. It's just a schedule. So the the main question is is there any appetite to to we will equalize the real estate tax rate? Is there any appetite after equalization to raise it? Correct. Okay. Or anybody want to raise taxes on real estate?
No, no one sure wants to, but can I can I clarify something, Mr. Suter? So the finance committee gave us a path forward without raising property taxes. Can you see anything the state might do to us that gives us no choice? What that was alarming that last that last?
Well, no, I've not seen any indication that the state, you know, typically when they get to this point, they they give you a pretty good idea of what they're gonna what they're gonna fund. And in fact, the information that's kind of trickling out now is is true. It would it would actually reduce the budget a little bit with two percent constitution raises.
All right.
Not diverted. Mr. Harrison as well to on on that particular question.
Yeah, we we also I received today something on the compensation board at five percent is is looking at for the constitutional offices. So we'll be hopefully by tomorrow, we'll have new numbers to present to the finance committee. Now they'll go a long ways to help close that gap. I know that I think our next meeting, which we need to schedule. I I think we'll make big strides in in closing that gap.
There's a fair number of accounts that go into that.
And I want to say, you know, you know, Mr. Bada has done a great job with she monitors those interest rates daily to maximize our interest rates. And and that's paying off. And the finance committee had said, let's look at that closer and we are so. But I wanna acknowledge Mr. Trivado on that.
Thank you, Mr. Roder. Do you need a vote or is it just general consensus?
You've you've already adopted a a budget schedule and if if you if you want to stay on that budget schedule, then there's no changes needed, but I would say that consensus would probably be good.
Yeah, the consensus I'm getting is we we want to equalize the real estate tax rate and leave it there at that at the equalization rate. Any objections from board?
Good, thank you.
So you got your marching orders there.
Thank you.
Six o'clock or a little bit after I apologize to our participants online, we will now move to the public hearing for the bond financing pertaining to the Floyd S K project consideration of the approval resolution.
Yes, the meeting today, the public hearing today was duly advertised. My notes. Also with us attending by Zoom is Bond Counsel Daniel Loro and our financial advisor, R T Taylor. The bond seller agreement, there's a resolution before you amount not to exceed nine million dollars. And also the bond cell agreement itself. This is more for V P S A. And as you're aware from Mr. Taylor's report last time, V P S A is offering the most flexibility of the two options. We have not heard back anything as of today regarding the literary loan. But that aside, V P S A, we are confident that we know they'll be flexible with us to structure our finance payments so that our debt schedule or debt payments remain level. The so our recommendation is to conduct a public hearing, ask questions, your staff or Mr. Taylor or Mr. Loro. That's.
Is Mr. Taylor, Mr. Laura, they presenter or they?
They they're they're available to answer any questions.
All right, we'll go Mr. Taylor first. Anything you'd like to add to what Mr. Harrison just said?
I know, I think Ashton hit it, hit all the high notes. I'm here if if the board has any follow up questions ahead of considering the resolution.
And Mr. Lauro, anything you'd like to add?
No, sir. Other than that, the resolution does provide flexibility to Mr. Suter, Mr. Harrison to either proceed the path of V P S A or the literary loan, depending on what we hear back, although it seems in the discussion, likely V P S A does provide flexibility to them to make that final call.
Okay. Board members, do you have any questions for Mr. Harrison or Mr. Taylor? Okay, all right. At this time, we will open up the public hearing. Is there anyone signed up wishing to address the board?
Yes, sir. We have a Mr. Steve Hart.
Okay, Mr. Hart, please step forward, state your name, Astro District.
Good evening again. Steve Hart, Cars Creek. Davenport presented to you two weeks ago, two alternatives for debt service to fund the nine million dollar Floyd S K Career and Technical Education Center and the fourteen million dollar Human Services Building. I wish to present to you a third option that I believe better serves the needs of our community. In Davenport's level annual payment option, we will spend about one point four two three billion dollars per year for thirty years totaling forty two point seven million. For this money, we get twenty three million buildings in twenty twenty four. And over thirty years, interest payments of nineteen point seven billion of our taxpayer dollars leave the county, make someone somewhere else richer. In twenty fifty three, we will have two thirty year old buildings in need of repair with no cash on hand and we will be nineteen point seven million dollars poorer. The structured debt option is similar with slightly different numbers, but we still end up with old buildings and poorer. Davenport's options are both debt, but for the exact same amount of money, yes, it's me suggesting you spend money. We can have a better outcome. I propose option three is level annual savings. For the next thirty for the next thirty years, we save one point four two three million dollars into a building fund. In twenty twenty nine, we renovate the Floyd S K Career and Technical Education Center and pay cash. In twenty thirty nine, we build a new Human Services Building and pay cash. In twenty fifty three, we will have nineteen point seven million dollars cash on hand to renovate and care for these buildings. I've given you one slide that compares the structured debt to the structured savings approach. If we take a short term view, getting buildings today and making us a little bit poorer each year might seem like a good idea. The trouble is we don't get to live perpetually in this year. We have to live the next thirty years as well. When we take a long term approach, having nineteen point seven million cash on hand is definitely better than making us nineteen point seven million dollars poorer. There are challenges with the approach I suggest and other benefits and considerations as well, which I am prepared to address if given additional time. Davenport is correct when they say in their presentation, quote, over time, the county's existing debt service will decline or step down and fully mature by F Y twenty forty two. The county may want to consider adhering to the approach of capturing the decline for purposes of of affording future capital capital funding, end of quote. Their approach is since you have paid off your debt, you can afford more debt. That's not really capturing the decline. It's surrender. Proper cap properly capturing the decline and using it to our advantage means getting out of debt, moving to a cash funded proactive approach, which we'll be well positioned to do if we just have the discipline to do it. You have a phenomenal opportunity to fundamentally change how the county funds capital projects for the better. Change from debt financing where we make somebody else rich at our expense to cash financing where we control our own destiny. All it takes is patience and discipline. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Anyone else signed up?
Yes.
Anyone present who didn't have the opportunity to sign up, wishing to address the board? Anyone online wishing to address the board?
No hands are raised.
Okay, at this time, we will close the public hearing. And it's time for board discussion. Any comments, questions?
Well, I'd like to thank Mr. Hart for his comments and I I don't disagree. I think the problem is we should have started this many years ago. And unfortunately, at this time, our Floyd S K building can't cancer can't wait another seven years. And human services trying to get three localities to do that, I think would be difficult at best. However, I think that's a looking long range. It's a good reason why we need to consider setting up accounts where we are putting money in each year for future projects down the road.
Thank you, Dr. Lance. Just chiming in there. Also, that did come up at the last finance committee meeting. That was something that was brought up and and I I believe we we do, we did verify that we do have a fund. We need some discussion on exactly how to to help that grow, to accomplish the exact kind of fiscal blend that that Mr. Hart suggested. As you know, sometimes it's good to put in some money, you get to borrow some, put some in, you know, it all depends on on the when you're burdening the taxpayer to to do that. But I'm 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 glad the subject is has come forth. I I intend to discuss it more there in the finance committee and get a better plan for future.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, I I I tend to agree with Mr. Hart as you know, better certainly would provide future boards a better scenario if we were able to pay cash, you know, and wait, but also agree with Mr. Lions that those two projects really can't are not afforded luxury at time. And, you know, I think this board, obviously, boards can change and philosophies can change, but I think this board has been fairly consistent with the fact that we understand what our debt payments are at this time. We understand projects are coming in 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 future years. But we want to place those projects in a timeline so that our debt payments really don't increase that much, which relates to not having to increase revenue sources on our citizens to pay for such debt. So I think, you know, this board's done a good job of of preparing and and planning ahead as far as that aspect goes and and will need to continue to do so to to keep the debt payments fairly consistent, if not lowering them so it doesn't have such an impact on our taxpayers. Again, I'll go back to, you know, Mr. Lore or or Mr. Taylor, anything that you'd like to add to our discussion before we take a vote?
The only thing I'd probably add is, you know, it it's a good it's a good strategy to use cash and debt to properly leverage and and put in infrastructure. That's how localities, which are perpetual entities, fund projects and it's goes back to the good old accounting principle, the matching principle, where today's users, you're collecting taxes from today's folks that might live there for the next five to ten years and you know, part of their funds you would expect would be spent on projects that they're going to enjoy versus stockpiling cash, you know, over the next twenty plus years and then affording it when they're either moving on or their kids are grown and gone, kind of, kind of you're matching the expenses to the time period in which that asset is going to be used, but it's, I agree, it's always a good approach, which I think the county practices using some cash to fund projects that call it are shorter lived, three, five, seven years, like equipment, vehicles, et cetera. And for the longer term assets that are getting used over twenty plus years, those tend to lend themselves to being leveraged to invest back in the county to attract new citizens or dollars related to those being expended while the folks are living in the county. That's that's typically how not just financial advisors or bond attorneys look at it. It's also how the credit markets look at it. As we presented to y'all, giving y'all perspective on how the rating agencies look at counties, whether they're leveraged one way or the other, meaning leverage too high, leverage too low. And are are you sort of taking care of your and reinvesting in your county's assets along the way versus deferring them for a longer period of time? So that's just giving a little bit of perspective on, let's call it the matching principle.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. The and as it's presented, it it's not to exceed nine million. When and the application for this will be in April, I believe it's April sixth, isn't it?
With the 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 application was submitted in February, the the call it the lock in period and let letting V P S A know whether or not you're in the pool, they need to know in early April. And then they price their bonds before the end of April and you close and your monies are available for the project in in May.
And the timeframe that the schools have provided us with potentially having that final number.
They're not gonna be able to really have that final number till the bids come back and that's not.
And and Daniel can step in too. We've got, based on what the architects and engineers have provided in the way of an estimate has is pretty consistent with what we've been looking at. If for some reason, let's go, let's take the worst case scenario, let's say we don't get enough funds to cover the project, but my under let me caveat it with, my understanding is that the project would be designed in a way to not to exceed what we're adopting today, but just playing devil's advocate here. If for some reason it goes over and we needed more funds, we'd be able to go back to V P S A in a future pool to get those. Taking it the other way, and if the current estimate that we're using, we come in under with actual cost, some of those dollars could be repurposed for either, one, other school capital needs or two, to to be paid toward the debt service that we're borrowing for.
Okay. All right. Any other question, concern, comment?
Other thing I would add, it it the health and human service ability is a little bit of a strange a a animal, but just keep in mind, there are offsetting revenues for that and there's there's some strategies as as for how that building is is paid for. And as far as and not the state social services money is coming.
And I completely agree and understand what you're saying, but not the money of the water tonight. It's just to focus on the nine million for the Floyd.
I understand. Yes.
So is there any questions, comments or anything? Is there a motion to approve? Is there a motion to approve? Floyd S K, bond financing?
Have we already done that by approving the application? Or, I, what exactly are we approved?
I thought we needed to have a.
Yes, I, it's a resolution authorizing issuance of a not to exceed nine million general obligation school bond for the county of Rockbridge, Virginia, to be sold to the Virginia Public School Authority and providing for the form and details thereof. It's different than the application.
My apologies, I wasn't clear. Alright, Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Ms. Ayers?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Hi.
And Chair of the Justice. Thank you, Mr. Taylor and Mr. Loreo.
Thank you. Have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Alright, next we'll move back. I believe we were at number 11. We have some appointments upcoming. It appears that um, as a, every board member had opportunity to review these appointments and, and are you comfortable with the applications that we have, the reissuance?
I'm not, I was talking for a little more, more time.
It looks like the applicants that are the existing members that we have are willing to be reappointed, but I didn't know if board members were okay with that, or if you wanted to seek application. The total action for progress board director Bruce Segler's term, as far as March 21st, 2023, willing to be reappointed? And is there a second?
Awesome.
Alright, uh, Ms. Ayers, Mr. Day, Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Hi.
And Chair of the Justice as well.
My concern was on the social services and economic development 30. I both had people come saying they want to apply, so I, I, I was hoping to have time to get further applications in if those actually do come.
We'll have time, we'll have the next meeting, I think the 21st. I mean, we have another meeting.
Yes, ma'am, and that was, that's what I was, yes, ma'am, that's what I was asking. Not to single out Mr. Segler, it just, that, that, that wasn't the ones that someone had asked me, that's why I felt I wanted to give them time to get their applications in, if they can.
So the board would prefer to hope, wait on social services and economic development until our next scheduled meeting?
Haven't we already? Didn't we lose somebody?
She ended up officially gone yet, or yes, she did. Yeah, I couldn't remember, she said she was relocating, but I wasn't sure when.
Yeah, we're losing her to Covington.
That meant what the time was.
It's up to the board if you want to proceed tonight or if you want to wait until next meeting.
I will say it's not gonna, it's not gonna hurt you because none of these expire before, the other two don't expire before your next meeting.
Well, at this point, let's, let's wait on social services and economic development to our next meeting. If there are people interested in applying, they need to get the application ASAP. Has everybody had an opportunity to review the monthly staff reports? Is there any questions about any of those, any comments?
We approve with appreciation as usual.
Is there a second? Alright, Mr. Lewis?
Hi.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Ms. Ayers?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
And Chair of the Justice as well. Uh, let's see here, board comments. I believe we have, we decided the budget schedule correct?
Correct.
What's the next meeting for that?
The next thing is, we wanted, we're going to set a finance committee meeting to have further discussion. Um, and then the joint meeting with the um, uh, school board is coming up, and I believe it was
The 23rd.
Twenty-third, yeah.
At five o'clock?
Yes, it's uh, Thursday, this Thursday week. And the question was, um, uh, talk with, uh, Dr. Thompson. And based on the fact that the, the state didn't have a budget yet, trying to figure out whether or not to have that meeting, I think the fact that the, the board supervisors are staying on track with your current schedule. I think our discussion was is that if we're staying on track with the current schedule, we just keep that meeting instead of pushing it out.
Yeah. May not have any final numbers from state, but let's, let's stay on track with that meeting. So it'd be, uh, the 23rd at five o'clock. Do we have a location for that yet?
Uh, no, but we've been meeting over Mari River, but I, uh, that's, that's where we, that's where we've been meeting, so that's probably.
Why I thought the last one was it?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, yeah.
Alright. I think our preference would be Mari River. I think it's easier, yeah. If, if, if you can, would you ask, uh, Dr. Thompson if Mari River's available? If not, you'll let us know the location.
I will.
Um, any other board comments? Mr. Lewis, you have anything?
No, I've said a lot.
Mr. Day?
So we do meet next Monday, 13th. No, I'm sorry, day is 13th.
We meet on the 20th.
But yes, yes, Monday.
Have another budget meeting scheduled for the 20th.
Yep, 21st, four o'clock. Ms. Ayers, you have anything?
I, I do not.
Mr. Lyons? Uh, obviously, it's a very busy time of the year. Uh, Ms. Whitten and Mr. Suter, if you'll keep us abreast of the number of meetings that we have, um, we certainly appreciate. Don't want to miss any. Um, alright, at this time, I will shoot here, uh, we will be moving into a closed session as permitted by Virginia Code 2.2 dash 371183. Discussion or consideration of a matter involving acquisition of real property for economic development or other public purposes where discussion and open meeting would adversely affect the county's bargaining position or negotiating strategy and as permitted by Virginia Code 2.2 dash 371185. Discussion pertaining to economic development concerning a business or industry where no previous announcement has been made of business or industries. Interest in locating or expanding its facilities in a community, it's a motion to go into closed session.
Yes.
And second? Alright, Ms. Ayers?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Hi.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
And Chair of the Justice as well. Now, closed session. Thank everyone for attending. Please be careful going home.
I move that the board certified that in closed meeting just concluded to the best of each member's knowledge, nothing was heard discussed or considered except the matter or matters specifically identified in the motion to convene in closed session and lawfully permitted to be discussed as exempt from open meeting requirements under the provisions of the Virginia Freedom Information Act cited in that motion. Did I read the note?
Yeah. That's only if someone doesn't.
So.
Okay.
So that's her motion.
That's my motion.
Second, all right, Ms. Air.
Yes.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes, Mr. Knight.
Mr. Lewis.
And Chair Burge, yes.
Any other comments? Anything for anybody? If not, is there a motion to adjourn? All right, Mr. Lewis.
I.
Mr. Lyons. Ms. Air.
Yes.
Mr. Day. And Chair Verjeff, yes.